Six o'clock on the city clerk's watch that called this meeting of Monday, November 3rd to order. Please take the roll.
Alderson Barnes.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Koppel. Koski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Sherrod is absent. Appointee Stouffer.
Here.
And Stowe.
Here.
Okay, we have seven present and zero absent tonight.
I'd like everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance tonight and stay for the occasion. Nancy Cox. You're just go ahead.
Okay, sorry. God of wisdom, we seek your help tonight. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us when we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of tonight's agenda item and reveal problem areas and show us the best solution that will apply. Point our eyes to every position of positive outcome since our last meeting and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, help us apply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters and make plans. This will be great in Jesus' name.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Go move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Tonight we have one new appointment, Mr. Stouffer, the city council. Please come to the front, Mr. Stouffer.
Raise your hand and speak after me. I, David Stouffer, do solemnly swear.
I, David Stouffer, do solemnly swear.
That I was forth Constitution.
That I was forth the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Sycamore.
Of the city of Sycamore.
And then I will perform the duties.
And I will perform the duties.
Of Alderson for Fort Ford.
Of Alderson for Fort Ford.
For the city of Sycamore.
For the city of Sycamore.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you for accepting the position. I really appreciate it. Next, we have on line the audience to visitors. Those who wish to address the city council may do so for up to three minutes, subject to the rules for public participation, which are printed on and on the table in the back of the council chamber. If that, we are going to swear anybody who would like to speak. If you would like to speak tonight, please stand and raise your hand.
Do we, if you solemnly swear, that the testimony will be before the Sycamore City Council?
Thank you. We're going to start off tonight in the far left corner. Mr. Ryan, will you please come forward?
I think you look like a sandwich board, but I don't know. How many people are old enough to remember what a sandwich board is? Well, tonight I'd like to do a song from my first of my live album that I recorded in Europe with Zanfier. Oh, no, that's not what this is. I'm here, I'm formerly of WLBK, I was at WLBK radio station for 25 years.
Sir, can you say your name and address?
Oh, TD Ryan, Terry TD Ryan is the name.
Got it.
At 853 North 10th Street in DeKalb.
Thank you.
I like long walks and romantic dinners. Oh, you don't need to know that.
Time's up.
But I mean this to say, WLBK formerly your news and information station is now just a station. But I'm happy to say thanks to our friends in Kishawaki, Kalikuanas, and TD Ryan unleashed a news podcast that is sweeping the nation. Heart content by Marvin Barnes was on, and Mr. Mayor was on as well. But what we're doing here on November 21st is we're collecting turkeys at the Salvation Army. Now, I know that's on the other side, the dark side, over there on the DeKalb side. I know it's running tight, we're good at that. But again, this Salvation Army serves all of DeKalb County. So this is for all of DeKalb County. So we collect turkeys all day on Friday, November 21st, and then all the church groups in the area provide all the side dishes. So right before Thanksgiving, all these families will have a holiday meal. And I don't mean to tell you guys how food is premium right now. So to be able to do this for a family is a wonderful thing. So if you could please come by, again, it's the Salvation Army, 9th and Grove Street in DeKalb. I know it's a little ways from here, but it serves all the people in DeKalb County, and we're collecting turkeys all day on Friday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So again, if you can help us out any way, and we're also taking monetary donations as well. And I may be wearing a giant turkey suit, so that's another reason you might want to show up for that. And then we freezing for food, we've been doing, this is going to be our 25th year of freezing for food. And folks who don't know, I used to live in the parking lot for three days at the Hy-Vee Shopping Center and collecting non-personal food items for the Salvation Army and monetary donations as well. So we're at, our next donation we have, we're going to go over two and a half million pounds of food that we've collected in 25 years. I just want to tell you real quickly, the first year, I was out at the Brad Manning Ford, and I said I would stay there, so I got 2,000 pounds of food. And it took me four days to get 2,000 pounds. Matter of fact, my lovely wife Becky had to bring five, 10-pound bags of flour to put me over the 2,000 pounds. Last one we did last year, we had 147,000 pounds of food. So again, we've come a long way, but we need your help. We don't have the radio station to promote this, so please help us in any way you can. Again, coming up in just a couple weeks now, let's talk turkey again at Salvation Army, 9th and Grove Street. Just stop by with a turkey or a monetary donation. And I'll be living in the Hy-Vee Shopping Center for three days. You guys know where Hy-Vee is, we're right there in front of the gas station. And if you come by and bring any kind of a monetary donation or non-personal food. And I want to thank the Black Hawk Moving and Stories, they're the one that provides us with the to-go container as well. And thank you so much for your time, and I hope you guys can help us out in any way you can.
Thanks, Roy.
Thank you.
There's somebody else over here. Mr. Brusher? We'll need your name and address, please.
My name is Paul Brusher, 624 Sandberg in Sycamore. Been a resident of Sycamore and the neighborhood for 42 or 3 years. And what I would like to see you guys do is not build one more apartment. They don't have a stake in the community like the people that own a house or a condo. And I would like you to take that into consideration and not build one more apartment. So I got to say, I have to go to a choir thing at the middle school with my granddaughter, so I'm glad you got me up here quick.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Eric, the 527 Alden Drive. Here to address the council regarding the Luther Lowell bill out there. Townhomes, homes is what they're playing on shows. I live, if you know the area, on Alden Drive. So what the impact we feel out there right now is congestion. We feel the congestion. A lot of small families, we just went through Halloween, probably had over 200 trick-or-treaters out there. And when you're thinking about rush hour, and that's the purpose why I wanted to be here today, is make sure you know, if you don't live in that area, what that congestion looks like and what the concern is from my side. So what happens out there during rush hour, morning hours, afternoon hours, is the school let-out, school drop-offs, everyone's going to work, going into 90, coming back from 90, going down Plank Road. And Alden Drive and Luther Lowell, they cut through the neighborhoods, right? So as there's congestion on Plank Road, they're cutting through our street. This is my oldest son here, I have four others at home, and there's a lot of young families in there. So we feel the congestion impact, just not from the cut-throughs, but also from the lack of infrastructure. There is not stop signs, there is not sidewalks out there. I see people consistently walking on Plank Road trying to get to Casey's, trying to get to... Now McDonald's is out there, trying to get to McDonald's. There's no crosswalk in that intersection at Plank and what is it, the one right there on Casey's and McDonald's? There's no crosswalk button. They're not even a crosswalk button out there. And I see young kids riding their bikes. And right now, as we're coming through, I'm like, look at this, it's dark. Daylight savings is gone. It's 5:30 and it's like pitch black out here. There's no streetlights really. And the congestion, and it's just unsafe. So when I go pick up my child from school or go to drop them off at school, I have to go the roundabout way, the safe way, we call it. Because trying to jump out onto Plank, cross traffic, get to the other side so you could drop off at school, you're playing Frogger out there. You're trying to cross the auto bond, and people are speeding 65, 70 miles an hour, and it's just not safe for us. So we have to go the longer way around. And I would love to see, what I would love to see, some solutions is crosswalks built out so there is walking traffic availabilities to the stores through the busy intersections as well as stoplights. I would love to see stoplights at the two main intersections coming out of Luther Lowell, and I forget the other street name over by North Grove over there. But we need stoplights. It's, if you haven't been over there when school let-out is, go over there around 3:30 and watch the families trying to get out onto Plank, coming back into Sycamore. They're risking their lives. They're having to look through, there's some signs of signage out there, and they're having to jump onto Plank real quick. It's crazy, and it's unsafe, and the congestion is just going to add to it. So the high-density housing is going to add to that.
Appreciate it. You were next, sir? Need your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Howard Copley. I live at 401 East Lincoln Street, and I just moved here in the spring. I lived in Kane County for 28 years. My dog got out and the animal control came, and they're going to give me fines and put the dog in the impound. I had a problem with my granddaughter's dog, and the police came out, talked to me very nice. I was thinking, you know, where's the club? And there was none, just good treatment. And I had to get a building permit. Kane County takes two weeks, and every piece of paper you can find. I go over to the building department, and I'm in and out with the permit. And then I had a water break, and they sent me, the water department came off and turned the water off and left a valve key so I could turn it back on. And at the end of the day, they came and closed it up. Then the water department called me and said, you got to come in and talk to us because your water bill's too high. So they, since it was a leak, they cut my water bill for $250. So every problem that I'd had when I came here, it wasn't a problem. And I've been complaining for 28 years, so I figure if I got something good to say, I should, you know? And so every piece of luck, my wife passed away, and the coroner came out, and she called me every week for over two months. Are you okay? Do you need anything? And I'd lost my daughter and son in Kane County, and I never heard from nobody. I mean, not that you expect it, but when you get something unexpected, it stands out. So whatever everybody's doing, you're doing a great job. I don't know if it's the water that makes everybody so nice. You know? And like I say, my wife was sick and then out of the hospital. My grass never grew, and I couldn't figure out how come. The neighbors were all cutting my grass. So the best thing that I ever did was move into Sycamore.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I've got grandchildren I'm taking care of, so I have to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate if somebody comes forward like that. I'm sorry, I lost track of who was going to speak on the side. Anybody else want to speak tonight? Please, Amber Quinn, forward. And I didn't know you have to give your name and address again, so.
Amber Quinell, I have, I've known her my whole life.
And address, sorry.
Live on Sterling Drive, and I have a house on Crescent.
Thank you.
So tonight I'm here to share concerns about the recent increase in the downtown parking meter fees from $1 to $10 per meter. And just how this decision is directly affecting small businesses and the employees and the customers downtown. So at first glance, $10 might not seem like a big jump, but in reality, it adds up fast for those that are running businesses downtown. For someone who works downtown every day, like a salon owner or stylist, that $10 isn't once a day, it's often multiple times a day. These meters reset every two hours. So if a stylist is with a client for a color treatment or facial that takes longer than just two hours, they can't just walk outside in the middle of the service to feed the meter. In an eight-hour shift, that $10 fee can happen three or four times a day, easily costing a business owner or employee $20 to $30 per day. And if they miss the meter by just a couple of minutes, they're hit with a ticket. So over time, it's not just frustrating, it can be financially devastating. So we're talking about hundreds of dollars a month for parking just to go to work. And for small business owners and their employees, it's not sustainable. So because that's a major expense, what we're looking for and asking for is for alternatives for business owners downtown to have the meters adjusted to where they will take more than one dime, two dimes, to where it will actually accrue, so you can put money in the meter for four hours. But that's not possible right now. Or, and the alternative, allow business owners to prepay, or prepay for longer, or even accept a quarter, there's another idea, or annual parking tickets for business owners. That is something, I understand the increase, but the business owners and customers, it would be really good if you could do some type of parking pass for $100 or $200 a year and still have, you know, that revenue coming in and give them options so that they can sustain their business there. And please also inspect and recalibrate the meters because many of them don't last the two hours before expiring. The way things are set up now, this policy kind of punishes the people keeping downtown Sycamore alive. It doesn't encourage new businesses to move in there, and many of them consider looking elsewhere where parking is simple and free. And that's not what we want. We want to keep downtown thriving, that welcomes people and supports small businesses and encourages growth. So please, just take another look at the policy, and let's try to make it fair and functional and supportive of the people that makes Sycamore's downtown place a place where we all want to be. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wants to speak tonight? I'm sorry. Oh, come on, I'm sorry. Name and address again, please.
My name is Amy DeFreeze, 207 West State Street. D-E-F-R-E-C. I own Pure Beauty Co. in downtown. First, I just want to say how much I love being a part of the community and how grateful I am for everything our town does to keep things running smoothly. I wanted to speak on behalf of the small businesses who rely on street parking. My business does not have its own parking lot, so my clients and I and all the employees depend entirely on the meters. Because I'm with clients back-to-back all day, some days 10 hours or longer, so I can't step outside, it is not possible for me to leave my appointments to feed the meter. I honestly didn't mind paying the $1 tickets, I would just get a ticket every day and pay it. I was frustrated with that, but I did it. But now that it's increasing to $10, I feel like that is a really big jump, especially when most other businesses in town have parking behind their buildings for employees and staff. And where we're located, we don't have any employee parking. I completely understand the goal of keeping parking fair and available, but this change would really hurt small service-based businesses like mine. We are very close to the courthouse too, so that also affects our parking situation. So I would love to see the town consider a middle-ground option, maybe longer meter times, a business permit, or even a grace period, something that supports small local businesses while still keeping parking manageable for everyone. Thank you so much for your time and for listening. I really appreciate all the hard work that goes into keeping our town great and a great place to live and to do business.
Name and address, please.
Mike Carpenter, 1731 DeKalb Avenue in Sycamore. I'm with RVG Commercial Real Estate. And I want to say first, I'm just delighted that I didn't have to follow that fine young gentleman's act because that was a really tough act to follow. It's an election, we already done. Was that staged? No, it was really, really pleasant to hear.
Thank you.
So as I said, I'm with RVG Commercial Real Estate. I'm a real estate broker, been working in the market here for a little over 30 years. I provided a lot of services for tenants, landlords, and property owners alike. I've worked in the corridor here where the North Grove Crossing subdivision is being proposed. I've worked with clients such as Casey's, Northwestern Medicine, Little Caesar's, The Greenhouse, King Fisher CrossFit, more. All of who are in support of this project, these businesses are. I've seen businesses come and go, go on as Exclusive Cafe, Subway, Harold's Chicken, Shelter Insurance, Alpha Graphics, Slow Smoke Barbecue, many more. A lot of these were actually national and regional franchises, but they've struggled over the years. The turnover in tenants has been enormous out there. McDonald's, who I've talked to, they also are in support of this project. They just invested over 3.6 million for their new facility. This is, and the newest constructed building out there in that corridor. Prior to that was the Casey's Building. That was done in 2012, that's when they started that project, and I worked on that project. Given the amount of commercial real estate that's available out there, by these calculations, we have like a 40-year supply. We just, we don't have enough density to support the existing retail that we have. Let's face it, e-commerce and remote working, it's changed the world as we do business today. So we need less and less brick-and-mortar locations, but we need more density to support the existing buildings that we currently have. The land planning was done years ago, pre-e-commerce times. So I think that a change in zoning is, I think that's warranted here. The proposed Plank Grove Crossing subdivision, it's well-planned. It fits into the backdrop of the existing subdivision of single-family lots and single-family, or excuse me, residential condominiums there. Chris Yowsey, who's doing the development, he's tested and tried in this market. He successfully completed five projects, and we know who he is, and we've seen what he's done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else to speak tonight? Are you going to speak if things are on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's not, we'll, if we need to, when it comes to the agenda, we can talk about it. Thank you. If not, we'll go forward. Anybody else who'd like to speak tonight?
I do.
Come on up. Will you hear when we do the swearing-in?
We just walked in at the...
Okay, will you please come up and get your sworn-in?
I'm Mary Knight. I just moved in to Coventry Circle over there.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony will be before the Sycamore City Council?
I do.
Thank you. We need your name and address.
Mary Knight, 840 Coventry Circle, Sycamore, Illinois.
Thank you.
And I moved in there in July to help my daughter and grandson. My daughter's going blind at 34, and she can't work. So I'm supplying that, thinking of finding a beautiful neighborhood, safe for my grandson, good schools, and then I hear about this apartment complex coming in. Very concerning. And he's not over-exaggerating as far as that road that comes up from the school, it's like Russian roulette. I kid about it, it's like playing Frogger. Jump out there, pray you don't get hit. That's how bad it is. And from my understanding, I don't know if it's high-end, is it low-end? I've heard it's Section 8. That could destroy our community completely over there. Our housing and everything would go down in price. Makes no sense to me, and I'm second-guessing my move here. I always loved Sycamore, raised my kids in Auburn. So I felt like I needed to say something because nobody else is saying...
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, council, let's move on to consent agenda. Mr. Bauer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move to reapprove the consent agenda, including the meeting minutes from my last meeting on October 20th, 2025, and also including the payment of the bills. Tonight is a large number, $2,515,074.78, but just over 1.8 million of that is a construction payout for the new fire station. And I'll move to reapprove the consent agenda.
Seconded. Person second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Alderson Barnes.
Yes.
Bauer.
Yes.
Koppel.
Yes.
Koski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stouffer.
Yes.
Stowe.
Yes.
Okay, that's some dizzy girl.
Number eight, we have no presentations, petitions, and proclamations. We have no reports of staff committees and city council members. We have no public hearings. So we'll move on to 11 ordinances. Ordinance number 2025.19, and ordinance authorizing request by Chris Yowsey of Yowsey Custom Homes for review and approval of a preliminary development plan and plot in accordance with Section 4.4.5(c) of the city's Unified Development Ordinance for the properties located north of East Plank Road and west of Luther Lowell Lane with the pin numbers 06-21-300-051, 06-21-300-055. First and second reading, Michael Hall, please.
Okay, so just to remind everybody, this is the preliminary plat, so there are multiple steps that will be come before the planning commission, before the city council. So for example, the final plat needs to come forward. We have a development agreement that needs to be created, and then special use permit, and then of course, a zoning change. So all of those have to go before the planning commission at another time, and then that will all come before the city council. So this is a preliminary plat, so I wanted to remind that. So this proposal has been reviewed by staff for compliance with the UDO, Unified Development Agreement Engineering. We looked at stormwater management, residential density, connectivity standards, and traffic and so forth. But that was submitted. So that has all been reviewed and submitted into the pack, and you can see that. And so we're just looking for the city council's approval for Mr. Yowsey to continue on to with the final plant and other items that I mentioned.
Thank you, council. Any questions on that?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, please.
Do we have a lot of property that is commercial available? That is on a really nice street? Like, Plank Grove, that's a nice area. If we change it to residential, then we lose the opportunity of having a business go in there, right?
Well, I mean, so if there is, if you've seen the zoning map, I'm sure you've seen that over there. So that intersection of Plank and Peace and 23, that section there, if you go out there, you can see all of the land that is currently zoned or commercial, right? So I'm...
My thing is, then why are we checking? I don't even think, I think that's a bad issue then. We should just keep it that way? I never would have thought we would have had McDonald's. But that's what I'm thinking, and I'm like, well, who's to say what other businesses in the future are going to come? We don't know what kind of businesses we're going to have interested to come out to Sycamore. So I hate to lose that. Let's just go ahead.
How long has that been zoning that's commercial?
12 years?
More than that?
More than that, many years. Mike, you know, it's over 20. Over 20? So 20 years, all of that.
It was probably in the late 90s when there was an attempt at a comprehensive plan that only yielded a land use, probably about 96.
I'd like to weigh in with what kind of go along with what Nancy said. Being a former, longtime planning commission member, I mean, I believe in our system. And the planning commission voted overwhelmingly, two, three-quarters, six out of eight, to reject it because it failed. And then it came back in October, and no motion was made. So I think there's a message there. And also, I'm a huge, huge believer, as everybody knows, I think, as council, the city of Sycamore has to do something about residential property tax. People of the audience here know, when 70% of your, of our tax base is residential, and only 25% is commercial, and only 5% is industrial. When 25 years ago, it was 60, 20, 20. And the goal is 50, 25, 45. So to give up more commercial property for residential...
So to give up more commercial property for residential is defeating that goal. So I'd like to not support it.
Your Honor, I just wanted to say too, that in regard to the, the comprehensive plan that specifies commercial in those areas, not only was it specified way back when, but the comprehensive plan has been reviewed several times since then, and that's not changed. Some, some roads were added, some roads were taken out, but in terms of zoning, those sections out there have remained as part of the plan.
Counsel, any other discussions? So what am I looking for in the motion?
I'd like to see a motion to approve.
Okay.
I, I think to-
Oh, sorry.
To just, to keep everything rolling here. Next motion would be to weigh first reading.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for getting that, but I just want to make sure there's another comment.
Which I made.
We have a motion to weigh first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think we have first and a second. Discussion. If not, I need a motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Chair has to rule.
Pardon?
Chair needs to rule.
Okay, I got that as six to one.
Six to one. Go to six to one. Can I have a motion on the second reading, please?
I'll move we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five point one nine.
We have a first and we have a second, please.
Second.
First and second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Barnes?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Kaple?
No.
Koski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Stoker?
No.
Stowe?
No.
Okay, then that vote is one to six.
Thank you, council. We go on to resolutions. We have non-denial number thirteen considerations. A consideration to switch from Emergency Medical Service Management Consultants, EMS MC, to One Billing Solutions for ambulance billing services. Michael Hall, please.
So I just wanted to emphasize on this, this is a cost mutual issue, so there's nothing that's coming out of the city's budget for this. This is just a move from one billing company to another, and I'll just quickly explain the ambulance billing process. So the current company is EMS, and they've been in various names, but going back a little bit of time. And what they do is, is that whenever there's an ambulance request and a transport to the hospital, there's typically about four different types of billings that are out there, so let me explain those in general. So there's someone who doesn't have insurance, someone who has insurance, Medicaid or Medicare. So the billing for an ambulance is a standard set price that we have, based on I guess from state. So they create a standard, I think, for the M T, the standard rate. So I think it's right around twenty-nine hundred, so something like that. I can't remember what it is right now. But it varies depending on the year, kind of like you do when you get reimbursed for a mileage. So what we do now is that if the person doesn't have insurance, then if they're a Sycamore resident, we do not go after the, the billing at all. If they have insurance, we go to the insurance company and whatever they negotiated that to be, we get that portion of it. And if they're a Sycamore resident, the rest is written off. If Medicare is, is, is a set price that they, they set by the federal government, we, we have to pay whether, whatever that is. And in Medicaid, they will pay the M T price. So we get full price no matter what on them, and there's usually nothing to grab. So the reason why I explain all that, I just want to make sure that you just understood how the billing works. So the current company does not bill for a car accident, so going after the insurance companies, for a fire, the insurance company, and does not go after Lyft assist. The current company can't do it, and that they wouldn't want to do if they don't have that capacity to do. So we just have to look for another billing company that would do that. We go after those three and then also get a better rate of return. So let me say, this is how much we bill every year. I'm just getting my numbers right. We bill three point five million dollars in ambulance fees, but we only collect one point four. So it's about forty-two percent, thirty-three percent, and that's about what the run rate has been for a while. So when we went out to look for the new company, they said that their rate is typically around seventy to eighty percent collection rate. And that we're not going after residents once we get their insurances and those sorts of things, but those other three factors as well. So the new company, excuse me, the old company, what they do is, the, the way they get paid is they take a portion of the money that they collect and they take a portion. So it's about four percent right now. The new company, they do want a higher portion because they believe they're better at it, so they want fifteen percent. So my question to finance was, what is the break-even point? So how much more do they need to collect in order to make even what, what they're making off of four percent, going to fifteen percent? So they would have to get five percent more, so they have to go from forty to forty-five percent. They claim they can get seventy percent. So my point in saying all of this is that I, I think going with the new company is going to be better service, better collection rate, and, and nothing's really changing. It doesn't really cost us other than they are getting more money. I think it's kind of a sales type of job. And I, I used to work sales. The more money you give someone, the more eager they are to grab what they can get from the insurance companies. It's hard working for the insurance companies, and so that's what they're better at, they said. They, they are breaking into the market into Illinois. They, they're based out of Iowa, I believe. They have fifteen different states. They're breaking into this state and they've been growing quite, quite heavily. The current company, we only have one representative to help Sycamore. They have eight that will be helping us. We have been getting some poor customer service from people. They'll send out letters saying, please fill out this information for your insurance company. Most people like toss it or whatever, and they, and they just don't follow up the current company. The new company is much more eager to go after those insurance companies to get what they can and go after different types of insurance. So we're recommending changing this. We believe that it will actually help in the collection and bringing more revenue. I don't know what it's going to be. We're going to need twenty twenty-six to see what that is, because January first is, is the change date. So that's, that's the whole proposal. I know maybe that was too much information, but I just want to make sure you all understood it.
Counsel, any questions on Mike's explanation there?
Andrew, just, just more of a comment. It's that, you know, I have, I have dealt with the present provider. And, yeah, they weren't, weren't real customer-friendly. They sent, it wasn't for me, but they sent a letter out, and I'm trying to get that straightened out. They found, their answer was all, go to our website, send a PDF. Gee, that's great, but I'm, I've got an eighty-four-year-old woman here that I'm dealing with. I don't think she's got a, got the computer to, to do that for you. I mean, they offered no other way of doing it, so let's try somebody new.
Counsel, anybody else in the conference?
Yeah, just, uh-
Oh, sorry.
So it sounds good, right? And as being in sales, I can claim a lot of things, right? So the seventy percent sounds really good. The only thing that I'd like to see added, if we could, is that I noticed that no one in agreement doesn't commit to a minimum collection rate. So we could, they could still collect forty percent, which is higher, but we would still be losing money at the fifteen percent. Is there any way that we could put a minimum collection rate in the contract?
That's, I, I don't know. That's tough. I don't know how they can guarantee a collection rate. I mean, that might be difficult for them to do. I, I don't know. Until they get into the market and they understand what they're dealing with, I don't know, I don't know if they're going to be willing. I know Keith's been working with them a little bit.
They seem pretty flexible. I mean, it's something we could ask.
I mean, if they can, if they can plan to get seventy percent, even if we put sixty, we won't win. You know what I mean? And then that assures that we're not losing money.
Uh, we could try. I mean, I'm, I'm, what percentage are you thinking?
I mean, I've got, I don't know. I've just, I mean-
What's the break-even?
Break-even, forty-five.
So we have, we, it's fifty. Let's still roll with they, let's roll with, um, yeah.
We, we could certainly ask them. If you want to make that part of the motion, we can, we can try and see. And if they don't, do, I guess my question would be, do you want to come back and, and either bring that back? Or if, if we, we'll try. If we can't, look what be the result.
What are we looking at, January first, I think?
Yes.
Could you get that turned around, Michael?
Yeah.
We can, we can talk to them, yeah. But I, I, I want to know if, will they come back and say, no, we can't guarantee anything? Would you like us to bring it back or just go ahead and move forward?
So you're looking for a motion to make the changes that Mike requested, and then for us to go on that. Mike really would make that consideration. Can you rephrase it somehow or another to dummy it down for a date, because he's new here today? Oh, sorry, you're, you're, sorry.
I would, I guess, kind of make the request that we add in a minimum collection rate agreement to the, to the contract.
Sounds good. Can I have a second on that?
Well, we still don't know what's going to happen if the company says no.
If they say no, yeah.
Then do we bring it back and go again?
We'll still have to bring it back.
We what?
We'd still have to bring it back anyway.
We still have to bring it back.
So we have a first and a second, and I have a little, oh, 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 oh.
I mean, we could approve the change with a request that we include that fifty percent minimum collection rate. And we don't like the response that, you know, not move forward. But basically what the council's doing is authorizing Michael to move forward with them.
Yeah. If I can't get it, so you gotta-
Then you can decide whether to hand back or-
Yeah. So if they, if I can't get fifty percent, if I can't get fifty percent, I'll bring it back. And say, here's what they're willing to do or not willing to do on that, on that. But I just want to, I would like to move forward with them as soon as we can, obviously get things rolling, but I will try for fifty percent.
Does that sound rea, I mean, does that sound reasonable?
I've never been in the business, so it's hard for me to say whether it is or not. I don't know.
It would hurt to ask, doesn't it?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
If a, if a company that provides substandard service can hit forty percent, I don't know why they can't hit fifty percent. We're, we're eight people working on it.
Yeah. I, I could try. I mean, that, I saw what he said, I'll, I'll give it up.
I think he's okay.
You're okay?
He did not include fifty percent, so what would-
We want to.
If, if that's what-
Yeah, you modify your, to say fifty percent.
Yeah, to, to approve with a fifty percent.
And Dave, you comfortable with a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah, my two cents on this is it's a one-year contract, right? So they have one year to show us what they can do, if it's not exactly what we're hoping for, if we can go out to bid again, right? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, David. So, so with a one-year contract, we won't know the whole numbers for a year until the end of twenty-six. Is that enough time to re-up, or do we need to?
It's an automatic renewal, so-
So it's going to renew if we don't give them so much notice to cancel.
Correct. I think it's thirty or sixty.
Sixty days.
Thirty days notice.
Thirty days, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that one.
Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Sure.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Marvin.
So the motion and the second has the fifty percent in it?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Alderman Barnes?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Kaple?
Yes.
Koski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
And Stowe?
Yes.
Okay, then that's some dizzy girl.
Thank you, council. The other thing I have underneath new business is we had another fantastic pumpkin fest. Thank you all over there, Lee's Fire, Street Car, and everybody else. Lions Club, Weatherman, the whole thing. Anybody else have anything else for the good of the council? If not, Alderman Stowe.
Move your ear.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting closed, seven forty.